Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Before we get into the agenda, I'd like to introduce the members of council and our staff to those in the viewing public and those in chambers. Beginning on my right, your left is Mr. Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services; Carolyn Mashada, our Manager of Legislative Services; Mr. Francis Chung, our CAO. At the council table, Counselor Jack Arnold is not able to be with us tonight; Counselor Rosemary Wallace; Counselor Ted Schaefer. I'm Mayor Peter Fassbender, and on my left, your right, is Counselor Gail Martin. Counselor Terry James is also not able to be here this evening; Counselor Dave Hall. And at our other staff table, we have Mr. Gerald Minchuck, our Director of Development Services and Economic Development; Mr. Gary Vlieg, our Director of Engineering, Parks and the Environment; Mr. Rory Thompson, our Fire Chief; and Kim Hilton, our Director of Recreation, Culture, and Community Services. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing with reference to Bylaw Number 2906, a zoning amendment to amend zoning bylaw 1996, Number 2100, to add a new comprehensive development zone, CD 35, and to rezone the properties located at 5331, 5341, and 5369 201st Street, and 5332, and 5342, 200A Street, and 20040, 20054, 53B Avenue, to a new zone in order to permit a 90-unit, five-story condominium apartment building. The purpose of tonight's public hearing will be to have the public have an opportunity to make representation to council, and any person in the audience who feels that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions to council. And members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members tonight is to listen to the views of the public. It's not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw and permit with individual citizens. Everyone will be given a fair opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will or should feel that they're discouraged or prevented from making his or her views known, and any person who wishes to present a written submission to council may do so. All of those submissions will be retained by our corporate officer, and copies of submissions will be available from her on request following the meeting. I'm now going to ask our corporate officer how this public hearing was advertised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just add before I do that, that, just to note that this public hearing is -- or Development Permit Number 10-12 is also applicable to the subject property and will be considered to address building form and character. So further to that, the public hearing has been advertised by placing notices on the City Hall Notice Board on Tuesday, April 30, and advertisements were placed in the May 7th and May 9th issues of the Langley Advance. In addition, 200 notices were mailed and hand-delivered to the owners and occupiers of all parcels of land within a 100-meter radius of the subject property. In addition, no correspondence has been received regarding Bylaw 2906. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe members of council did receive an email from someone who is going to be making a submission tonight. There is a sign-up sheet. If you have not already signed your name and wish to speak to this, you can make your way up to our staff table and add your name to the list that's already been started. And with that said, I would like to introduce the two individuals from Keystone who are going to be making the presentation before we open it up to the public, and that's Mr. Ron Martins, and I believe also Mr. Davis is here as well, who will be assisting. So I will turn it over to you. Can you make sure that the green light is on on your microphone?
The green light is on.
There you go, and work as close as you can to it so people at home can hear it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Counselor, and staff, and also the neighbors. It's good to be here to present this exciting project. We're pleased to be working again with Westone Properties in the city of Langley. As you can see on the screen, these are some of their successful projects in the city, and, yeah, they build a quality product, and we're glad to assist them as well. We're also -- has been good to work with Gerald through the process. It's a great process. We really appreciate the systems you guys have in place and the way you help us design better communities in your city. So we'll move right on. We might move on. Here we go. This basically shows our site, which is located in the center of the designated high-density areas. We call it the island site because it's totally surrounded by streets on all four sides. So the proposed project supports the OCP designation, Neighborhood Revitalization objectives, high-density residential. The proposed project supports the OCP policy that encourages a variety of housing types to meet the needs of the population and the demographic challenges faced by the city. We're addressing those challenges by varied unit sizes, number one, and by varied amenities, and we target those challenges in all of our projects because our developers basically want to suit the market that they're in and have a profitable project at the end, and also help the community and help the city in their challenges in that way. So the city of Langley Official Community Plan, it's designated high-density, 80 units per acre. Density proposed is 80 units exactly. Subject property, 1.13 acres in size, which would support 90 units as designed. There were some comments that came out of the Advisory Planning Commission, and we addressed those, and the way we addressed those were basically by increasing some of the patio areas, especially on the lower floor, on the podium level. We made the parking surfaces a little more interesting, given the fact that there -- we have units looking down on that visitor parking space. The suggestion was to make it more interesting, so we did that in a way of -- by way of changing the treatment of the pavement and changing the texture. So it's a rather attractive concept. We'll get to that in later slides. We've also detailed unit plans for the commission and detailed the amenity spaces. Just to add that we meet all the parking requirements, number of parking for residents as well as for visitors, as well as we've dedicated more property than standard around the perimeter of the site, the island site, to create more on-street parking. Basically, that is our site plan. The five-story form that we're proposing, basically it allows us to use a -- or to create a smaller footprint for the development, which obviously with a smaller footprint, there's more site area freed up for green space and open space on the site. So that's another good reason for going to the five-story form. As you can see, our access points are off of 200A. That's where our surface parking access is ramping up, our underground parking ramping down, and then our pedestrian ramp and pedestrian stairs enter the pedestal there. We have an access point, also pedestrian access off of 201st Street. Underground Park 8, as mentioned, totally secured, and enough parking for the residents to meet the bylaw and the visitor parking on the podium level. Floor plans, the five-story building, they basically have to be typical from first floor to fifth floor. So as you see, there's a mixture of units, unit sizes. We range all the way from 575, I think it was, 585 up to excess of 1,000. So like I say, the demographics we reach are varied. Goes from smaller units, one-bedroom units, all the way up to two-bedroom with dens. It's a good mixture, good unit mix. Exterior elevations. As you can see, we've used a lot of color. We've used a lot of texture differences just to create a little more interest in all four elevations on the building. We're actually using some material, it has to be non-combustible materials on the exterior because of the five-story form, using hardy board, and we're using some other materials that are highlight materials, as you see the brighter colors. Those are highlight materials that sort of run throughout the project, as well as a band of that same color on the base of the building to break up the floors to, there The other views, units, unit layouts. We've kept it to about eight different unit types. Landscape plan, there you can see the visitor park and the way we've dealt with the pavement treatment there, just to bring a little more interest. The amenity building is actually a two-story amenity building that runs from the parquet level for different uses down there to another podium level for, obviously, meetings and those kind of things. Westone is very deliberate in their planning of amenities to include all demographics. They typically have libraries in their units. They would have an exercise room, games room, and meeting space for the condominium as well. We've also got some, a lot of outdoor space here, you know, play areas, sitting areas, those kind of things. We're near some good amenities at the school for playgrounds for kids, so there again, trying to hit all the points. Not sure why we included so many landscape plans, but there's a bunch of landscape plans in here. I wish I could tell you more about the trees, but I don't have my professional here to deal with that.
Mr. Minchuck.
Mr. Mayor, through to Mr. Martins' presentation, some of the landscaping plans are intended to highlight the SEPTED report. The applicant proactively engaged a SEPTED practitioner to, I guess, provide as meaningful and proactively as possible through the design to discourage nuisance behavior activities. So that's where some of the SEPTED principles are articulated within the landscaping plan.
Yeah, definitely. That report was prepared, and then it was given to the landscape architect to meet That would be our brief introduction to the project. We're available after all the public comments to answer any questions if Mayor and Counselor would like us to do that. Thank you.
Any questions of the presenters from council before I open it up to those in the public that have signed up? Counselor Hall.
One of the points that was brought up at ABC that you might elaborate on was the advantage of a five-story over a four-story in terms of building code and fire sprinkling. Could you perhaps?
Because I could address that. I think the fire chief would be happy in that we'd be using NFPA 13 rather than 13R, which is a much more stringent requirement for sprinklers. Any open attic space or any open concealed space will be sprinkled, and the balconies will be sprinkled with the dry system. So, you know, there's been a lot of fires where the balconies haven't been sprinkled. The distance between firewall is reduced. We have to use non-combustible cladding, and just a number of issues, of smaller issues which are addressed by going to a five-story building, including building shrinkage, non-combustibility. I actually think it's probably a safer building than a four-story. Okay?
Thank you. One more? Go ahead.
I think this has come up in discussion anyway. When we refer to parking, perhaps through the mayor's staff, could you just suggest what the ratio of required parking is, what that standard is? How many parking spots per unit? As the proponents have suggested that there's more than enough to satisfy the bylaw and additional spaces on street.
Mr. Minchuck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to Counselor Hall. The parking regulations as it relates to this site are 1.2 spaces per unit, and a further 18 stalls are required for visitor parking. So a total of 110 would be allocated towards tenant parking with 18 for visitor parking. The street parking provisions are not included in the bylaw requirements. They're over and above the bylaw requirements.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other members of council that have a question for the presenters, so, Carolyn, could you tell us who the first name on the list is, please?
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening is Barbara Scott.
Welcome, and if you come to the stand-up microphone, give us the benefit of your name and address, and please speak as close to it as you can, just so everybody can hear you.
As long as it doesn't whistle, it's not whistling?
No.
Okay. My name is Barbara Scott, and I live at 2002053A Avenue, which is directly kitty-corner to the proposed development. Thank you very much for allowing us to come and make this presentation this evening. My husband and I have lived at that address. October 1st will be 40 years, so we are longtime Langleyites. We've raised our family, and we've always enjoyed the neighborhood very much, up until the last five years or so. I can't be exactly sure of how long it has taken, but I'm looking at about five years, when Westone purchased a number of properties. Since that time, we've seen the neighborhood deteriorate to the point where it almost could be considered a slum. We certainly understand that at the time of these purchases, the economy took a downturn, and the developer was unable to build on their properties right away. As a result, several of the properties were rented out, consequently trashed and boarded up. Those properties remain boarded up. They have been boarded up for four, five years. As a result, several of the -- oh, pardon me. Until this past year, those properties were not maintained on the outside at all. Lawns were seldom mowed. The boulevard was left to grow until the grass and weeds were a foot tall. And it's only because the neighbors, ourselves included, complained frequently to the city that Westone finally hired one of their own tenants to cut the lawns. Fences were not repaired, and were left to lean all over the place. It's just a disgrace. And Mashad is no different. That's not included in the presentation that you got, but if you look at Mashad, and I didn't include it because I'm not sure how many of those properties that are sitting there, a mess, are Westone-owned properties. We don't know. We began to worry that the empty houses were being used as flop houses, and we began to question our own security. The houses that are still rental properties have not been maintained at all and look very shabby and rundown. We feel that if the renters are not going to take responsibility for the maintenance, this developer has to. After all, as homeowners, we have to keep our properties well-kept and tidy, or the city has the authority to come along and order us to do it. We are not anti-development, and we recognize that this area badly needs renovation and revitalization. What we are asking for is, here is some assurance that this developer, who doesn't have a great track record in our area, will respect the homeowners who still live here during and after the building period. What is going to happen to the boarded-up property on the west side of 200A? What about the two boarded-up properties on the west side of 201st? Also, it would be good to know just which properties Westone owns in the immediate area, because we don't know, so we have no idea who to complain to. We are going to have to live with the noise, dirt, and crowding that this project will bring to the neighborhood during the building period. Once the project is finished and the units sold, this will certainly bring even more noise and crowding to the neighborhood. We understand that the developer is having to give some of the property over to widening the streets to allow for additional street parking. We would like assurance that bylaws regarding hours of work, upkeep of the streets and boulevards, parking enforcement, and noise are adhered to. The sonnet development on 201st and Mashad is very nicely maintained, presumably by the condo management company, but the parking along Mashad is terrible. No one seems to pay any attention to the law about parking on a corner, 201st Street and Mashad, and the yellow line is long faded. I have made presentation before to bylaws about this, but it just doesn't seem to be taking a whole lot of effect. When we are trying to make a left-hand turn coming out onto 201st Street, we practically have to crawl into the traffic to see if there's anyone coming west on Mashad. This, of course, is the city's responsibility to enforce. It's not Westone's problem. We can see a similar problem occurring along all the streets that surround this development. There must be some parking restriction signs erected. With 90 units being built, how many parking spaces are being allotted to the buyers? Our houses on the cul-de-sac, believe it or not, I do know where I live. I sent you the wrong information, and I apologize for that. I've entered my dotage in my retirement. Our houses in the cul-de-sac, will some street parking be reserved for the residents of the houses in this area, or are our guests going to have to fight for parking spaces? If you come along 201st Street between Mashad and 53A, there, it's just solid parking there, and I'm assuming that that is probably being taken up by sonnet residents, because the houses on the other side of the street are mostly boarded up. So that's my presentation for the evening. I'm not sure if you can answer all of those questions, but hopefully we can get some answers tonight. Thank you very much for listening.
Mr. Minchuck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to Mrs. Scott's comments, I just wanted to offer the following. Firstly, maybe not necessarily in order, I just wanted to give assurance under our bylaws, construction noise is regulated to 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 PM on weekdays, and 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturdays. No construction can take place on Sundays or statutory holidays. I think we've touched upon the parking provisions relating to this site. There's a total of 128 spaces, of which 18 stalls will be designated for visitors and 110 for tenants. With respect to parking along Mashad Crescent, we have, and thank you for bringing it to our attention, as recently as today, discussed this amongst ourselves, to conduct a sightline assessment that will likely result in some signage erected to ensure sightline visibility is in fact adhered to proper engineering standards. And then secondly, I just wanted to touch upon any of the additional street parking that will be provided as a result of this site will not be reserved for this development, but will be for public use. Thank you.
Thank you. And in terms of the presenters, do you have any comments that were made relative to the developer?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. Well, those are noted in the presentation. Counselor Hall.
Some reference was made to yellow paint on the sidewalks. I thought it was our practice now that, yeah, on the curbs, I thought it was now our practice that we don't have that yellow paint and we have signage instead.
Mr. Chung, to Mr. Vlieg.
Counselor Hall through the chair. Excuse me, Counselor Hall through the chair. That's correct. The city does not paint curbs yellow. We use signage to denote parking restrictions.
So is it correct, what I heard Mr. Minchuck saying, you're going to be looking at those sightlines and appropriate signage will be put in place as required?
That's correct.
Thank you. Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was with interest, I got the email today from Mrs. Scott, because I was going to bring it up later on, about derelict homes in the city here. And the people who want to build this didn't answer the questions on the boarded-up homes at all. I mean, there's one that, 208th and the end of Douglas has been boarded up for a while, which does not belong to this developer, but I have heard from other people that Mashad Crescent area, the homes that are boarded, they're quite the hangouts, to say the least. What are you going to do with your boarded-up homes?
As I say, we're, at this point, we're not willing to respond, but at the end of the public hearing, if that's acceptable, we could get the developer down to answer those questions.
I think it somewhat goes hand and parcel here with what the concerns are of the neighborhood there, but I have a concern myself, sitting up here, and, thank you.
Mr. Minchuck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to Counselor Schaefer. Within Mrs. Scott's submission, she does specifically ask a question regarding the boarded-up properties on the west side of 201st Street. Those properties are part of this, will be redeveloped at a later stage, but are not part of this development project. I have no comment on what properties Westone owns. That's, I guess I could respond in another date and time, but I don't know what properties specifically Westone properties controls.
Well, I think the residents are asking questions that the developer will hear and can respond directly to those. I think from the city's point of view, the issue of unsightly properties or any of those things fall within our bylaws, and I think working together with the residents and the developer, that discussion can happen after this public hearing. The next person on the list, if you wouldn't mind, Carolyn.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Lowton.
And again, ma'am, if you could come to the microphone, work as close to it, give us the benefit of your name and address, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi, and Sandra, is this one?
Yes, yep.
Hi, Sandra Lowton. I live on Unit 1125360201 Street, and we've lived in that neighborhood for five years now. I totally agree with this lady that's here. She's said a lot of the things that I would have brought up, too. But the first issue I wanted to bring up is, we were on the holidays and we came back and we got the pink notice in our mail, and it did say that these originally were supposed to be three-story. In most of the vicinity, in this last week, I've looked around the area, most of them are three or four stories. Now, I don't know if they're counting the parking area below as a story, as a story? No. So you've got the parking, is it underground or above ground?
Partially underground.
Okay. So then you're going to have five stories. We're looking around the neighborhood, we have nothing over three or four stories, and most of them are three. So that's going to be quite tall in that neighborhood. I have nothing against the development. It will improve our neighborhood. As this lady's just said, we have boarded-up houses. It's right across the street from us. We've just had two houses in our townhouse complex sell. I know the economy's gone down, but I'm sure one of the things that deterred people from buying in that area are those boarded-up houses. And yes, to my knowledge, the lady that's doing the cutting of the lawns and stuff is dealing with Westone. Those houses there on 201st belong to them, and I think the ones on Mashad, too. And this has been five years, and they were boarded up when we first came, so I don't know how long they were boarded up before that, but how many more years are we going to have to look at that? I know that there are some houses owned, and I'm sure that they're trying to buy up those houses to get into that area to develop, but we're having a problem with parking and stuff as it is, and we don't even have it, other than the sonnet. I don't know where we're going to ever find parking, because in our complex, we have no visitor parkings in the townhouse complex. We only have our individual gradens in ours parking, so that's going to be more parking on the road, for sure, with 90 units in it. But that's one of my concerns, and a lot of the concerns that she's talking about. It is an eyesore. We have had fire trucks. We have had police people there. We have had fire trucks, we have had police people there. People are living in those homes, you know, in the wintertime. Even though they're boarded up, they're an eyesore. It's a very disgusting area for us to be in, and that should be, that's a shame, that we have to put up with that. Why weren't these places rented? You know, fixed up and rented until they're going to develop? Because right now, we're living in a slum area, in a sense, just like this lady has said. But why are we allowing a five-story building too, to be built, when most of the, there's no other ones around there that are three and four?
Mr. Minchuck? Could you also make mention of the notice that went out?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to Ms. Loten's comments. Firstly, the original public hearing notice, that scheduled a public hearing date on April 6, aired in the notice details. The notice details of the original notice stated a three-story building, whereas all along, right from the outset, the proposal was to accommodate a five-story building. That's why we had to reschedule the public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, because we just received our notice when we came home, that week that we came home, so we, other than that, we hadn't seen it. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. councillor Martin, you had a question of the presenter?
No, no. Well, in regards to what she, what she said.
Okay, please.
Well, I just, I'd like to clarify what the presenters said in regards to, after the public meeting, you'll get someone from West Stone down here to answer some questions, because I think these people deserve an answer, especially in regards to the boarded-up houses. And if they're not going to be rented and maintained boarded up, I'd say demolish them. So is that what you meant? You're going to get someone down here tonight?
There is somebody in the audience that could speak to those issues.
Okay.
That was my point, sorry.
And just in regards to the public notice, did a correct public notice go out saying five?
Yes, it did.
Thanks.
And I think it is important for the members of the public that are here speaking to this, the issue of the derelict properties and so on have no direct impact on this, on this particular public hearing and this application. It definitely has to your neighborhood, and we understand that, and that's why I think a separate discussion with the developer is appropriate after the public hearing. So we're not trying to cut off that discussion, the concerns are noted, and I think that discussion between the developer and our staff can be dealt with. So the next name on the list, there is no other name. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak before we close the public hearing? If you could come up to the microphone and give us the benefit of your name and address? I know we could hear you from back there, but...
My name is Sean Pytich, and I live at 20041 on 53B Avenue. And I was actually, I heard a rumor from a realtor that because the condo market is soft in Langley right now, that if the developer goes ahead and builds this building, that it'll turn out to be a rental building. So I just wanted to know, is there any truth to that? Or is this going to be like a condo, like for sale? Are these units going to be sold?
Thank you. I think you can answer that.
Yep. Our understanding is that this building is going to be stratified and sold units.
So there's no plan, as far as you're aware, and any application through our Development Services is for stratified and condo sales?
Stratified condos, yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, if you can come up, and we'll get the benefit of your name and address, and then maybe you can also put your name on the sheet that Mr. Light has afterwards. Thank you.
Heather Loslow, unit number 1095360201st Street. I also am in the townhouse unit on 201st. My main concern is parking. I understand what they said by 1.2 parking spots per unit. Can that be adjusted? Because with the Sonnet, I'm sure they probably had the same rules also, but they are correct to say that 201st Street is jam-packed, Machaud Crescent is jam-packed every single night. We have a real problem in our area with parking. And, you know, if any emergency vehicles or anything came, a lot of people are even parking in those vacant homes in the driveways. So if anything ever happened, if any of those ever went up in flames, you know, can emergency vehicles and stuff get there? But my concern is that there's not enough parking, that I don't understand why there wouldn't be at least, you know, two parking spots per unit, at least the large units.
Mr. Minchuck?
The, I don't have the specific, in response to Ms. Loslow's question, Mr. Mayor, the specific parking regulations as it relates to the Sonnet built some years ago, the 1.2 spaces per unit has been in place since we completed our densification study back in 2008. With respect to emergency vehicles, that was one of the main issues and concerns raised at our interdepartmental meeting that resulted in the applicant being required to dedicate two and a half meters of their frontage or their land on three sides to widen the road to enhance emergency vehicle, as well as parking safety, along the three frontages of 583A, 53B, and 200A Street respectively. We currently have enough right-of-way along 201st Street to accommodate parking as it stands right now. But as referenced earlier through the comments raised by Ms. Scott, there is a need to do a sightline assessment, because not only is there some issues that need addressing through signage along Machaud Crescent, but there's also the need for some signage along 201st Street.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from members of the public before I move on? councillor Hall, you wanted to make your comment.
To clarify the parking, there's been a number of developments that have come before us on 53rd and 52nd, and as we densify, this concern about parking continues. So some municipalities have a provision for resident-only parking. Has there ever been an appetite in Langley City to have signage that suggests resident-only parking? I'm not talking about the parking beside this development, but rather in the outlying areas where the residents live to simply say, parking for residents of such and such a block.
Mr. Lee?
Councillor Hall through the Chair. That is an ongoing concern that a number of different communities face from time to time. The critical challenge with that is twofold. One is enforcement, and the other is the issuance of parking permits on an annual basis and managing all of those parking permits. In some of my previous incarnations, when I was managing traffic operations, we have looked at it, and again, depending on the size of the community and the scale in which council wishes to do something like that, that you can be talking anywhere from a quarter to more than one full-time position just to manage resident-only parking. That's, it is at council's discretion to do something like that, but it does require additional resources to manage the program and for ongoing enforcement.
Thank you. Ms. Machada, did you, that was your comment as well? Thank you. I don't see anyone else getting up. I don't see any other hands at council tables, so I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Wallace, all of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. This public hearing is closed, and we will now move into the regular agenda for this evening. The first item is, I need a motion to approve the minutes from May the 6, 2013. Moved by councillor Schaefer, seconded by councillor Hall. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all of those in favor, opposed if any, the motion is carried. We have no other petitions and delegations. We do need to receive the minutes of the Advisory Planning Commission, and councillor Arnold isn't here. Councillor Schaefer, did you wish to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will be dealing with it later. It was reviewed, and it's called the Regional Context Statement, and that was dealt with at APC on May the 7. And there was, it was moved and seconded, there was no opposition by APC to this context statement, so we will be dealing with it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for councillor Schaefer? Seeing none, we'll move on from there. We'll go right into the mayor's report. And the next regular council meeting will be on Monday, June the 10, and that will be a televised meeting. The subsequent meeting to that is June the 17, and we're doing two back-to-back, again because of other conflicts with other council meetings. And now I'd like to move on to Metro Vancouver. Councillor Martin, do you have anything to report? Any questions for councillor Martin with respect to Metro Vancouver? Seeing none, and I understand councillor Schaefer, there's no library happenings tonight, other than the library is hopping, as usual? Thank you. Moving into administrative reports. The first item we have is Terms of Reference for the Arts, Performing Arts and Cultural Advisory Planning Task Force. And Mr. Chung, did you wish to speak to that? There's two recommendations there that I would ask for a motion, that the Terms of Reference for Performing Arts and Cultural Center Advisory Planning Task Force be endorsed. Do I have a mover? Councillor Wallace, seconded by councillor Hall. And we'll move into that one, and Mr. Chung, if you can speak to it, and then I'll bring the other motion forward.
Thank you, Mayor Fassbender. As council's aware and the community's aware, the issue about the development of a performing arts and cultural center has been in the discussion in the community for some time now, and it was being recognized by both the city Langley and township Langley, that a discussion needs to take place to initiate that discussion. And we're very pleased to inform council and the public that through a partnership between the city Langley, township Langley, school district 35, 22 Western University, and Quatlin Polytechnic University, we're going to be working together to develop a Terms of Reference and also working towards a business case to determine whether there's a need for a performing arts and cultural center in the Langley. And arising from that, development recommendation concerning how big the size of the performing arts and cultural centers should be, and what kind of tour groups that we want to attract to bring into the center, and also importantly, to develop the performer, to determine whether this such a facility will work from a financial perspective within this community. And once all that is carried out, then we'll, this task group is going to determine what type of governance structure, whether it's going to be a third-party or arms-length organization or society going to be created to manage this facility. And then also, the group, the partnership, will obviously seek financial support from all levels of government, private, public organization, and also develop a timeline to move forward with the construction of this performing arts center. There's a Terms of Reference that's developed through partnership with this group. There's some deliverable dates and funding commitments between all the parties, and each party is committed to contribute $10,000 to retain a consultant team to assist with Advisory Planning Task Force to carry out the objectives of the mandate. And this mandate will shall cease by the end this year unless it's extended in order for the group to continue on with the work. And I'm pleased to say that both Quatlin Polytechnic University, 22 Western University, Vertusity have endorsed the Terms of Reference. Township Langley just endorsed it this afternoon at their council meeting, and the school district will be considering this Terms of Reference at the May 28 board meeting. And with that, I'll pass it back to the mayor.
Thank you very much. So you've just named all of the partners, at least at this stage. Are there any questions with reference to the motion? councillor Hall?
I just want a little bit of clarification. When we had preliminary discussions, we talked about trying to ferret out the difference between a performing arts center and a participatory arts center. And when we sort of sent staff off to work on perhaps answering that question, I'm just wondering if the participatory arts component has sort of been severed off and disappeared, and this is solely a performance center? Or whether the Terms of Reference would allow a participatory component whereby artists and young performers would perhaps practice or do their, what they do in that center as well?
Mayor Fassbender, through to councillor Hall. We're looking at all aspects of performing arts and cultural arts and participatory arts, so this is not an exclusive type of study. We're going to look at all facets of the whole arts, the different components.
And I think fair comment is that input will be sought from all of those existing groups in the community as well.
That's correct.
councillor Wallace, did you have your hand up? I was... No? Yes? No? Okay. councillor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's wonderful that we're doing this study, and we're doing it in partnership with a lot of other people in the community of Langley. But I just, you know, I think once word gets out that this study is being done, there's going to be a lot of optimistic people there thinking they're going to get an arts center, and that would be wonderful if we did. But just to point out that in the report, the Planning Task Force will not have the authority to give direction to participating partner's staff or to commit to expenditures of participating partner's funds, and also, the process does not presume a recommended location for future performing arts facility in either the city or the township, nor commit either municipality to participate in the implementation of a recommended course of action. So I'm not trying to be negative here, but, you know, we have to look at this, that yes, we're doing a study, but that doesn't mean to say the end will be a building, a performing arts center, although we'd all love to have that. So just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. I just think what I'll say is, having sat around the initial table, what we did hear from all of the partners was a desire to really sit down and look at, what are we talking about? What does it look like? What's involved? What would be the elements in it? What are the costs of those? What size of building? All of the things that we've all talked about, and what we do know is there's a variety of opinions in the community, depending on what people perceive their needs. What this will help do is to engage them in the discussions, sort those out, and look at what the options are. And then from there, we will look at whether or not this makes sense, how it'll be operated, operating costs, size, all of those things. And I think one of the beauties of it is, is both universities have been at the table. And what we have seen in other communities, when you have the universities involved, there is the potential for some significant support in terms of management and usage, same with the school district. So I think that's what this is all about, is to answer as many questions as we can, or maybe raise some that we haven't even thought of yet, so that we can focus on that for the future. And there is no commitment on anybody's part. We don't know yet. But I think if, what I see happening with the rotary clubs and so on, there is a desire for something. And at least this way, we're going to have the answers to the questions that everybody's asking. So that's the purpose of this, and that's why I support it moving ahead. So seeing no more hands, I'll call the question on the motion, the first motion, and that is that the Terms of Reference for the Performing Arts and Cultural Center Advisory Planning Task Force be endorsed. All of those in favor? Opposed if any, the motion is carried. Now I need another motion, that the city's share of the contribution to fulfill the mandate of the Performing Arts and Cultural Center Advisory Planning Task Force, in the amount of $10,000, be allocated from the existing arts center feasibility study capital budget. And if I have a mover? Moved by councillor Wallace, seconded by councillor Martin. And Mr. Chung, we have in excess of $40,000 in that fund that we had set aside to do a study ourselves, so...
That's correct.
This is a small portion of that, and then we'll decide what we do with the rest afterwards. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Opposed if any? The motion is carried. Thank you. Now moving into the OCP Amendment Bylaw number 2915, the Public Consultation and Adoption Requirements. I will ask that you bear with me, because we have to go through a procedural process to meet the Terms of Reference for an official community plan consultation and adoption requirements. So the first motion that I need is that the bylaw cited as the City of Langley Official Community Plan Bylaw 2005, number 2600, amendment number 6, 2013, and number 2915 be read for the first time. So I need a mover. Councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Schaefer. Any comments or questions? Just for the benefit of the public and council, we have to... Just for the benefit of the public and council, we have to go through these steps, and the major part of it, of course, is going out to public consultation. Seeing no hands? All of those in favor? Opposed, if any? The motion is carried. Then I need another motion, that council, one, direct staff to send copies of the Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw Number 2915 to the following organisations and authorities for consultation prior to the public hearing, in consideration of the requirements set out in Section 879 of the Local Government Act. And those parties are the township of Langley, city of Surrey, Metro Vancouver, ministry of environment, ministry of transportation and infrastructure, Translink, school district number 35, the agricultural land commission, Quantland First Nation, and the department of fisheries and oceans. Would someone like to move? Counselor Schaefer, seconded by Counselor Martin. Questions or comments? Seeing none? All of those in favor? Opposed, if any? The motion is carried. Now I need a motion that we consider the Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw Number 2915 in conjunction with the 2013 to 2017 Financial Plan Bylaw Number 2911, and the regional liquid and solid waste management plans in accordance with Section 882, Subsection 3 of the Local Government Act. And I need a mover? Moved by Counselor Schaefer, seconded by Counselor Hall. Any questions or comments? All of those in favor? Opposed, if any? The motion is carried. And that takes care of that. Thank you. Now moving on from there. Yes, sir. Counselor Hall?
Could I ask a question of the CAO?
Yes, you can.
Before we move on to bylaws?
Mm-hmm.
What we just did is a good segue into the question that I have regarding the web access, the broadcast to this. Sometimes our, what we do at council in terms of trying to engage the public gets lost for a variety of reasons, and we have had a number of difficulties with the webcasts of these meetings, last meeting. The results are not even up on our website, and we have asked staff to try to resolve the difficulties that we've had in the past. And I'm just going to ask of the CAO where we are at trying to get these available to our public.
Although it's out of order, in terms of timing, Mr. Chung, go ahead. You can answer the question.
Mayor Fasbender to Counselor Hall. Yes, we have had some challenges with our webcasting, and some of them are internal and some of them are external. And with the technologies that we have, and sometimes when we upgrade our system and the firewall walls that we upgrade, sometimes that poses a challenge with us broadcasting and streaming our webcast. But we are working on it continuously, and, you know, I think over time, we have minimised the issues that we have. And I think, you know, you're moving forward, those issues will be minimised.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Moving on into bylaws. I need a motion for second reading of a bylaw to amend the City of Langley Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 2005, Number 2600, Regional Context Statement. Counselor Wallace, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. All of those in favor? At Counselor Hall, please.
Before we do this, I'm just wondering, through the mayor to staff, if someone could answer a question perhaps on, we've had at least two examples of other communities suggesting that they wanted to do something other than what was in their context statements. And I guess the expectation is that we, as the city, take a position on what they're doing elsewhere? And I'm wondering in the future what guidance we might get from our own staff regarding some of these other applications, the most recent of which was a long contextual thing, three-part change by Port Moody that I don't know whether I want to take a position on that or not without some kind of administrative advice. So there's my question. Will staff in the future provide council for some sense of what impact there might be on Langley City by something done by a Port Moody or Belkara or wherever?
Mr. Chung?
Mayor Fasbender to Counselor Hall. Those, anytime any of those issues comes up, staff do evaluate them and determine whether we need to bring it to council's attention. In the case of the Port Moody one, I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Beddoe, and based on what he said, it has no contextual impact to the city of Langley, based on what they have suggested, so hence, we didn't bring it forward to council.
So just supplementary then. So I'm to assume then, that if staff doesn't bring something to our attention, that it's generally agreed or suggested by staff that it has little or no impact on Langley City?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I will add this, that some of those, because they go to a vote at Metro Board, if there was a concern by the city of Langley, this council could take a position and therefore give our representative that context, so that that could be taken back to the vote at the board. A lot of these really have no impact on surrounding communities. The only potential impact, and that's why council gets copies of all that correspondence, is a philosophical one in terms of the regional growth strategy, where there are some communities sometimes, or individual board members at Metro, who have an opposition to a change and express that at the board table. But if we don't have any from staff's point of view, then it's strictly up to us. So with that said, I'll call the question on the motion. All of those in favor? Opposed, if any? The motion is carried. Now I need a motion for final reading of a bylaw for the regulation of highway traffic fines within the city of Langley. Moved by Counselor Hall, seconded by Counselor Martin. All of those in favor? Opposed, if any? It is carried. Bylaw 2910, final reading of a bylaw to amend the fees in the municipal ticket information system. Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Wallace. All of those in favor? Opposed, if any? The motion is carried. Moving on to bylaw 2906, third reading of a bylaw to amend the City of Langley Zoning Bylaw 1996, Number 2100, to add a new comprehensive development zone, CD 35, 45331, 5341, and 5369 201 Street, 5332 and 5342 208 Street, and 20040, 20054, 53B Avenue, the subject of our public hearing earlier in the evening. Do I have a mover? Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Hall. Any questions or comments? Counselor Wallace?
I don't know if this pertains to this, but we were going to hear from the developer about the boarded-up houses.
I said we would do that after, and that would be a separate meeting with the residents. It's really not under the purview of council, but staff and the developer will meet with the residents to have that discussion.
Oh, I just thought so, because the developer is in the audience, I thought.
Yes.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Hall?
I think this development is good for the neighbourhood, but I guess I would like some sense of clarification of when the shovels might get into the ground in terms of going forward with this, to give some solace to the people that are suggesting that they may have to wait and wait and wait with boarded-up buildings for a period of time.
Mr. Martins, do you...
In consultation with the developer, he's going forward with it. If this goes to fourth and final, and we'll be making building permit application within about two months, and then construction.
Thank you. Mr. Minchuck, did you... No? Does that answer your question? Please, Counselor Hall?
Okay, now, that having been said, as I said earlier, every time we talk about densification, the issue of parking comes up again. And I think that while we consult with the neighbours over the boarded-up housing issues and whatnot, we should start to sense out the public's opinion about some limited resident-only parking provisions, perhaps in the highly densified areas of the city. It makes little or no sense to have that kind of bylaw enforcement and whatnot in areas that aren't densely populated. But as we identify a number of apartment blocks and buildings within an area, as we saw earlier in the area closer to the Langley Mall and whatnot, which is really getting developed fairly rapidly, the parking issues are becoming a greater and greater concern. So perhaps the city might address some of those issues.
I think staff will make note of that and bring a report back to council on resident limited parking and so on, so we'll ask for that to be done. Any other questions? Seeing none? All of those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Schaefer is opposed. The motion is carried. Moving on to bylaw 2909, final reading of a bylaw to amend City of Langley Zoning Bylaw 1996, Number 2100, to add a new comprehensive development zone, CD 36, at 20510 Langley Bypass. I need a mover? Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Wallace. All of those in favor? Opposed, if any? It is carried. Moving on to bylaw 2914, final reading of a bylaw to amend the 2012-2016 Financial Plan Bylaw to bring it in accordance with our audited financial statements. Do I have a mover? Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. All of those in favor? Opposed, if any? The motion is carried. There are no motions or notices of motions? There are no correspondence? Is there any unfinished business? Seeing none? Any new business? Counselor Wallace?
Just wanted to invite everybody to the Arts and Culture and Heritage Open House at Douglas Park on May 25th, from 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock. So I know we won't be having a council meeting before then, so just wanted to put that invitation out to our guests in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hall?
A while back, I asked the question, if there were to become a vacancy for mayor, what did we have in place going forward? And the answer that I received back was that while we had had a discussion under a bylaw that had come to the table, we, that was withdrawn, and we would revert back to the idea that the deputy mayor of the day would assume temporary responsibility or whatever. So that brings to mind a question. We've had, in the last few meetings, a couple of bylaws that have come that have sort of surprised me. They've sort of arrived without much briefing. And we've had some things withdrawn, and they've gone away, and they haven't come back yet. So I was wondering if there might be some way that staff could create a template, much like we have through the Development Department, that suggests, this has been dealt with at first reading, this is proceeded to third and fourth, we're anticipating final, it's been withdrawn, and it'll be coming back. I think procedurally, it would be helpful as a council member to know where these things stand, or what staff might be working on, that we might be anticipating, so that council members might do some groundwork. So I'm not making that a formal motion, I'm just sort of a question of staff, whether that might be possible to create that kind of a template.
Mr. Chung? Or Carolyn?
Sir, if I can just ask for clarification? That's only outstanding bylaws, not anything that's been adopted formally?
If it's been finalized at final reading, then it would disappear off the template?
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Seeing no other hands, I wanted to make mention of the fact that May 27th to June 2nd is Bike to Work Week, and these posters and flyers are going out. And what we're encouraging everyone in that week, if you have a bike and you feel up to it, and it's not going to cause you any problems with your heart, so we need a defibrillator, that you ride your bike to work. And even if you only do it one day in the week, it's well worth everything from a health point of view to do that. And I want to thank staff for working with all of the various partners to ensure. We got a great picture of Andrew in our engineering department, who is an avid biker, rain, sleet, and almost snow. And so you will be seeing these around, so please remember that. And the other thing I wanted to say is tomorrow is Provincial Election Day, and I hope that everybody exercises their democratic right to cast their ballot. It is important that people vote. Doesn't matter who you vote for, as long as you vote for someone that you want to support, but please make sure you vote. And with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. All of those in favor? It is carried. Mr. Minchuck, you were...
After the, carried.
Okay. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The owner of Weststone Developments would be happy to meet with residents at the end of this meeting to discuss...
You can gather in the public gallery there.
Some of the issues raised.
If that's convenient, please do. And thank you to Weststone for being here and being willing to meet with the residents. I'm sure members of council that have an interest can listen in. So thank you.